Good evening, Portland. It's now seven o'clock. I'd like to call our meeting to order tonight. We'll be doing our department budget workshop tonight. I'd like to start with Dr. Britton. If you could please come up here. Welcome.
We need a drum roll?
Yeah, we're just getting, they're just pulling up though.
Right.
There. So, hello, I see you again.
I'm seeing you again.
About ten o'clock.
So I presented this last night. I'm not sure if there are, you know, as we, as I answer questions or where you'd like me to start from, you know, the way I kind of had set this presentation up was I wanted to give you a snapshot of a building by building look and then some object line items in terms of the percent increases. So why don't we leave this up and then as questions come up, I can, you know, refer to the relevant slide and, and we can go through that. So this is our, your, I suppose is your opportunity to ask me questions about what's contained in the budget? And any questions, concerns or additional information that you need?
Would you rather have us ask questions as we go along or, or ask them at the end?
Um, why don't we ask them right now? I mean, we just kind of want to go around and start there and, you know, otherwise I would just feel like a groundhog there, kind of doing the same presentation with you. I'm happy to do it that way too, if you prefer.
Should we start?
I have a question, just a quick one that came up as I was going through your, the material that we're giving to us, Mike, Mike and the candidate. Education cost sharing, it's an item zero, zero, one, zero, one.
The U C S.
It's, I'm sorry, it's on page five. Of our, yeah, our budget, it's the only one I have.
Is it, is that this one?
No, it looks like, it looks like this. Yeah, it's not a hard one. It go, you show, uh, this is for revenue, it's actual revenue for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five. It jumps up a lot in, by almost, it's like two hundred thousand from four million, seven, seven, five to four million, nine, ninety-six. In, in previous years, it doesn't change very much at all. I know you mentioned education cost sharing and there was some change. Is it that much?
Yeah, got it. Go to the next one. Yeah, so, um, one more. Here, we're talking about, so we are, we are expecting a two hundred twenty-one thousand.
So, okay, that is said, okay.
And that, that is set. We know, we, we know we're getting that. The one we don't know about is this is the U C S education cost sharing grant. That's the big one we get from the state.
Right.
That one we know, and that one's increasing two hundred twenty-one thousand to about five million, just shy of five million.
Right, yeah.
The one we don't know, of course, is the excess cost reimbursement. That, that is one that legislature is still haggling over.
Right.
Stephanie, what do we budget at? Seventy percent for next year? Seventy percent. And again, that's a, you know, keep our fingers crossed. This year it came in, it's, we just got the supplementals. What is it? Sixty-seven? Oh, good. But that, that number is set. We know that for sure.
Yeah, that's what I was curious, we're pretty confident with that number right now. Great, thank you.
It should be higher. I think we would, it would be, it would be nice if we shifted some of the burden back towards the state level so it didn't fall, so I have a way on local share. We can control what we can control.
Um, I had a question on the coaches' salaries. What was the reason for the big increase?
Yeah, that's a good question. So last year, when we were going through the budget regulations, if you remember, we took forty thousand out of the budget because we were going to explore pay to play. Right? Lots of school districts in the state charge students for the number of sports that, that they play. It ranges, I think in Wallingford, we pay about two hundred and sixty dollars for each of my kids to participate in soccer and lacrosse and things that they do. Um, so we took money out during what was a very difficult budget season last year and went back to the policy committee and the Board of Education to explore the possibility of implementing pay for play. The Board of Education decided that we didn't want to do it. We felt like it would just be too much of a burden on our families and we covered that forty thousand dollars from other places in the budget. Um, so this year that increase is larger because we're putting it back and we're not going to explore pay to play this year. So there's not a giant jump in the amount either of coaches that we have or money that coaches get played, but we're trying to fill that hole in from a cut that we made last year and decisions not to implement pay to play or otherwise charge our families and students for their efforts. The athletic coordinator.
What? Because it's still up from two years ago.
Yeah. Yeah, it's still up. Come on, I'm seventy.
In this current budget, the, um, the stipend for the athletic coordinator was budgeted in the extracurricular line, but we felt it was better to move it into the coaching line because it's better with that. So it's just a move out of one, one, oh, one, five into one, one, oh, one, four. So the small increase is the one percent interest, really, one percent increase in the actual stipends. Then add in the forty thousand for the makeup for the pay for play and then the around eighteen thousand-ish for the athletic coordinator. But that's pulled out of, if you look online, one, one, oh, one, five, we're down twenty-two thousand. That's that coming out of there and moving up. So it's just kind of a net swap.
Which is the underlying, just the one below.
The one below.
Just the extracurricular.
Yeah, that's the negative twenty-two. So take about eighteen out of that. That got moved up.
I'll say. Um, question on the certified salaries of the four point nine two percent. I assume that is all contractual increases?
Uh, there's, there's contractual increases and we're moving some positions out of grant funding into the L A. So there are some increases in terms of F T E. Whereas this year we're using, uh, we have a method help grant and a school improvement grant. Both of those grants are sunsetting at the end of the year. We had to move the positions out of grants into the L A.
It was covered by the fifth grade position.
We did make, we did net some of those out with some reductions in other places, but there's some changes there. And the increase in, um, we're increasing a point four for health and a point four for art high schools based on, um, those are part-time positions. We've seen an increase in student demand and we're going to be able to offer some additional programs like advanced placement for our students, which is really cool.
Question. Um, I think you spoke to this last night. I just want to make sure I'm thinking correctly. Line seven, three, oh, one, five, techno, uh, seven, three, oh, one, four, technology hardware has a astronomical percentage jump. Is that the Chromebooks that you were talking about last night and getting those on a cycle?
Correct. So, um, we've been, uh, purchasing Chromebooks in the past with some connectivity grant funds that became available to us and, and a lot of that was related to the federal COVID relief money. That's gone, gone away now. You know, all of the, the federal money and other grants that we had been using have, have sunsetted. So we're, we need to start a Chromebook replacement cycle. And we've worked with the town in town in the past and done some leasing. We're just not, we think we have a bad, the plan would be every student who rises from fourth to fifth grade and every student who rises from eighth to ninth grade will get a new Chromebook. Right? So we're gonna, this year we have, it's a relatively smaller number because the fourth grade class is, is one of our smallest classes. There are seventy-six students in it. So we're going to purchase seventy-six Chromebooks for each rising fifth grader and we have about a hundred, hundred and ten or so current eighth graders going to ninth grade. So that's about two hundred Chromebooks we'll purchase. We'll give each fifth grader and each ninth grader a Chromebook. The Chromebooks come with a four-year warranty. So that same Chromebook will stay with the students fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth grade. And then they'll turn that into us and then they'll get a new one for ninth, tenth, eleventh and twelfth grade. We'll collect those.
And they go down to.
They go down to third and fourth grade. So our third and fourth graders will have the older out of warranty models, but eventually as we catch up with the cycle, students in fifth through twelfth grade will have the devices under warranty. And we've also made a decision to discontinue one-to-one device for pre-K, K one and two. Our thinking about that is they're too young developmentally for screens. We want to limit their exposure to, um, devices until they start third grade.
Should I assume that buying these Chromebooks in bulk, you get some kind of a cost benefit? And if so, what does a Chromebook cost? Just roughly.
Plus the warranty.
The warranty, we put on to thirty, give or take.
Get paid for the Chromebook itself and then the software.
Thirty bucks?
They're going to repurpose the, the cases. We'll still fit. So they're going to use the cases from the old one.
Okay. Okay, that's what I thought it was. But I was looking at the large percentage. I just wanted to confirm that's what it was.
Yeah, and that's what it is. Because we haven't done this in the past. So that's why you see that. I think it's about a twenty-six percent jump in that object line. That, of course, will level out now once it's there for, for future years. And then the number will change that we purchase each year based on how many students are in fourth grade and, um, eighth grade from.
So the new, the new Chromebooks, as you purchase them down the road, will roll into the fifth graders?
Yeah, the third and fourth grade.
Okay, no, but I'm saying when you buy a new one, where does the new one start? At fifth grade or at freshman?
Oh.
I got you.
Yeah, because it's a four-year warranty.
Yeah.
So fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, we turn that in, again, new one.
Okay, I see where you're going. Okay.
Yeah, you're trying to get on a four-year replacement cycle, right? With, and, and replace twenty-five at a time. That way we have flat, a flatter budget item going forward and then.
Better than.
Well, you know, it makes sense, right? We, we've always had that. We've had the ability to get grants where we could, we could buy them, you know, in bulk and that made sense as well.
Yeah, and I think their, their cycle makes sense. And thank you for the tech department. They educated me about it. But, you know, so what'll happen is next year, if we do this, next year, half of our devices will be out of warranty, but in three years from now, if we stick with the cycle, all of our devices from five through twelve will be under warranty, but we'll never have devices under warranty at third and fourth grade, which is okay, because generally at third and fourth grade, the devices don't travel with the students as much. So they don't, they're not damaged in the same way, well, the same regularity. And it's the fifth through twelfth graders will, you know, they're dropping them or bringing them back and forth home. But if they're under warranty, we can have them fixed without, uh, requiring that additional charge.
Yeah, and once you get deeper into the cycle of doing this, you'll, you'll be creating a surplus anyway. So if something fails, you'll have plenty to replace them.
Exactly.
So what happens next year, the, the next fifth grade class, you, you gotta buy like, whatever, eighty more?
Yeah, so for, so we're going to purchase the seventy-six for every fourth grader rising to fifth grade.
Right.
And I think it's a hundred and ten next, for every eighth grade going to ninth grade.
Okay.
So fifth and ninth graders will be out of warranty. Next year, students in sixth, seventh, eighth and tenth, eleventh, twelfth, some of them have devices that have one more year of warranty. So about half of our fleet will be out of warranty, which, you know, it just means for us that for the next two years until the cycle catches up, you know, we're going to have some really one of our I T technicians doing a lot of screen replacements and, you know, it's going to look like a workshop as we try to repair them as best we can. Otherwise, if they're beyond repair, we'll have a surplus of older devices. They just won't be as nice.
So, but wait a minute, this is what I'm asking. So.
The next grade coming up then will have to put in the same amount. So the kids that are in third grade right now will need to go to fourth grade next year while these guys are.
So we plan on doing this for four years.
It's going to be, it's, it's going to be every year.
Yeah, every year.
Yeah, for the next, but for the next four years, then everything is new and then it just keeps going.
Yeah.
Right, so going forward, right? Going forward, we'll basically have almost, almost, every budget cycle will have a basically a request for twenty-five percent of the Chromebooks. Yeah, so every four years they will all be replaced.
By a hundred percent.
Nope, nope, they're going to get on that cycle. That's what they're talking about. They're, next year they'll buy twenty-five percent and they'll start at fifth grade. And, you know, the kids going to fifth, going into ninth, right? And then when those kids go up a grade, they take those with them and then the kids going into fifth and ninth again will get another, get a new Chromebook.
Four years.
Once they've done that for four years, they will all have gotten a new one in those cycles. And then going forward will now be on a twenty-five percent replacement cycle. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
How, how well have the, uh, have the computers done for you? Like, what's been the impact on education? Uh, and on the other side, has the maintenance of them, uh, been a hassle? Has it been costly, like, to keep the program going? Like, what, what's the bulk of the upsides and downsides?
I hate to put it out there, but I see Caitlin over there. Caitlin, how often do you use your Chromebook? All day, every day, right? Caitlin's a senior this year and I would imagine since you're a freshman, probably every single class you're using Google Classroom and pretty much all of your homework is done on it. They're, they're essential at this point.
Charles, let's repeat what she said because they won't pick it up.
Oh, okay. All, all day, every day in all of your classes, right? I had to put you on the spot, but then.
And, and maintenance, I'm keeping them up and running?
Well, it's helpful to have them under warranty because when they're under warranty, if, if Caitlin accidentally spills coffee on it or drops them, what we do is we pack it up, ship it off to the manufacturer and they either repair it or send us a new one. When they're not under warranty, we have to replace if it's a screen or keyboard or things. But sometimes if they're broken to the point that they're beyond repair, you know, if you spill your coffee on it and don't get it in rice quick enough, it, it might end up being discarded. So that's why it's essential that they're under warranty. It helps us, you know, keep the inventory.
Um, special ed and other costs that are unknowns, um, what's, what's the way that you're handling it? How are you looking at it? What's, what's the approach right now? Because it is such a question mark every year, right?
Yeah, so, you know, one of the stressors we have, and we don't do this, we, every year, our, our student support services director will ask for a ghost outplacement. Like, you know, we are budgeting for just the number of outplacements we anticipate. What would be a wise thing for us to do would be put, you know, maybe two placeholders in there for unanticipated expenses. And, and as a reminder, we, last year, what got us into the deficit were new students who arrived in Portland that we didn't expect to arrive in outplacements in other districts. And, and the way the laws are set up is that when the student becomes a resident of Portland and we become the nexus, we assume responsibility for that student's individualized program, even if it's an outplacement, right? So, you know, what might be smart would be for us to put a placeholder there to, to build a, a hedge against that. Of course, some years it works in our, to our advantage too. Students might move out of town or age out of programs. But what you see in the, the budget that we brought for you is just what we have now and can anticipate and, and we'll see if we get new students. If we do, you know, those are days that Stephanie, Sarah and I are having conversations about where we need to shuffle funds to, to cover these expenses. Um, but right now the budget contains twenty-two outplace students, which are what we have now, um, and our fingers are crossed.
One, one question that jumped off is looking at page eleven. Medical insurance. Surprisingly, that number was, is, you know, basically down, which, you know, I haven't seen the last, you know, you don't usually see a negative. I assume that's personnel, you know, people versus, I know the cost is up a little bit. Are all those numbers, um, in terms of, as we look at potential risks, right? In the coming year, is that number firm up that, you know, are we under contract with that? Or is there any risk of that number changing or going up?
Signed, we, we signed.
So, yeah, so we, we, we are, we're going to have a new vendor next year. We went, we went out to bid. Um, I'm not sure if you shared this or you want me to.
Oh, please do.
Okay. So our current vendor, uh, came in with a pretty high increase. And the, the insurance companies determine their increases based on usage, like what our, what our risk pool is. And, you know, we, our risk pool has been challenged over the past few years and our, our current vendor came back, I think at like fifteen point nine or so. It was a, a significant increase enough that our broker, our, our consultant recommended that we go out to bid, which we did. We opened the bids. Uh, we are, we've chosen the lowest bidder, which is a nine point nine percent increase. Now, I think that what you're seeing though is, hey, if we're getting a nine point nine percent increase on our health insurance, how come we're only asking for one point seven percent more overall, right? And that's a function of the census. How many people are taking insurance? What we've done is we've hired a lot of young teachers who are under twenty-six and a lot of, um, young teachers who are under twenty-six will stay on their parents' plans. So what's interesting is we don't have as many of our teachers taking insurance year over year, which is why the number's down. Now, what happens is those teachers get older and when they can no longer be on their parents' plans after twenty-six, they'll come on ours. So we expect that that number's going to go up in the future. But this year we surveyed all of our faculty to ask people, are you planning to jump on our insurance next year? And if you're planning to jump on, are you planning to take a one-person, two-person or family plan? Or if you're currently taking a one-person or two-person plan and have a child, would you be taking a family plan, which could increase those numbers? So that number's unpredictable.
I mean, that's based off of who we have right now. You know, people resign throughout the end of the year, through the summer. That's what happened this year. We have a two hundred thousand dollars savings in that line item right now because of who left over the summer and retired, which is how we get so low right now. But who knows, it could be the complete opposite um, next summer, or it could be the same. It's unknown.
Yeah, we're, we're just budgeting for what we anticipate based on, on our survey. So that's.
Yeah, I just, I saw that and that's, that's obviously in a, in an otherwise challenging year. That's a helpful number.
Helpful.
I just wasn't sure what the risk level was, but it sounds like that's pretty, pretty certain right now, or at least as much as we can be.
Same thing with how it goes, do I budget more in anticipation? If, you know, but if nobody leaves, then we're showing more and I'm not afraid.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that what's, and it's really, I'm glad you pointed that out because there's certain risks in the budget and certain assumptions we're making. We're trying to make those assumptions with the best evidence and, and information that we have, which is why we did surveys and reached out to people. But sometimes the wind fill your sails and sometimes they, uh, they blow against us. Um, you know, our, we're going to hope that, um, our information is accurate. Some of these are educated guesses.
Last evening, last evening you spoke about the purchase of a van. And I mean, I'm the liaison to the board of ed, so I've heard you all with this conversation and I think it makes perfect sense. But would you be able to just give the group a, just a synopsis of the purchase of the van and why?
So, um, uh, the director of student services, um, sat with her administrative assistant and they looked at all the outplacements, all the in-town um, runs to try and figure out if, is it even worth us getting a, a third van? Because if we, if we can't make it work, there's no point in purchasing it. Um, so with where people are placed now, they were able to say that we can take three outplacement runs. I, I don't want to stay away from M and J, but bring it back in-house. Um, and then they could help out too with some in-district ones. And it's been fantastic with what we've had. Um, you know, as long as we can find a driver, um, we should be good savings with that. And I believe we budgeted as if we were getting it. So that is shown within, um, within the line items in student services that it, it isn't going to increase the, um, administrative assistant line point five and, but it all ends up being a net, but.
Exactly. I would assume in the next few years, it's actually going to be, it's going to pay for itself plus some.
After this year of the first two, the first van we had, it pays for itself now. Now the second one, it'll pay for itself. And now with the third one, probably in the next one to two years, as long as, you know, the location of where those students are going stays where they are. Um, it's, it was a no-brainer to do it. And I know we always asks about transportation and how can we make it better and, and not cheaper, but easier. Um, and that just seemed, and I know we tried to get away from it a few, a few years ago, but it made more sense now in doing it the van way than the mini bus way.
And I know there was so much to present last night. We just kind of blast over that, but I just, I thought it was important that everybody understands the reasoning behind it.
Yeah, it's a one-year payback essentially.
Really?
If the investment, at the end of this year, it, it will, we will see much more save, just like we're seeing really good savings with the vans now.
And as I recall from the Board of Education conversations with this, when you're taking these children to their outplacements, they may be all over the place. And, uh, you'd be having another van that where we can kind of control the, where the van is going and work the schedules. It, it just seems to save money all around.
One outplacement is forty-two thousand dollars. I mean, we're saving three by buying the van, so.
Are these new vans?
Yeah, the price looks, because you probably see them driving around town. They have Portland Board of Ed on the side of them and, I got to tell you that the drivers are fabulous. Um, we, we use one for our transition program, one for our placements, and this one will be a second one for our placements. Um, they've been great, you know, and kudos to Sarah and Olivia for managing them and hiring some really high quality van drivers. I should share in one here with the senior center. It's, it's working out really well.
So give me an example of like a typical day, how many outplace students do you have to cart, you know, move and, um, how far are you going with them?
Yeah, we have twenty-two outplace students. Um, some are going to Wallingford, some are going to, uh, West Hartford, some are going down to Lime, Old Lime, some are going to East Hampton, Madison. It, it depends on the facility that we're sending them to, which aligns with their, the nature of what goes through.
Then you have to go pick them up?
Yep.
It's about two hours in the morning and two hours in the afternoon. And then if there's any midday runs, if, you know, uh, some students are on early dismissal, late going in, or if there's, sometimes we'll do, um, field trips for the kids. So, you know, we try to keep them busy. Our full-time one, we have one full-time and then two per diem. So the full-time one, um, she does five point seven five hours a day in the morning, two in the afternoon, and then we fill in in the middle.
And then for our transition program, you're likely seeing our transition students at the senior center or all over town as we're helping them develop, um, skills.
These are postgraduate.
Eighteen to twenty kids.
How many do you, how many can you put in the van for a trip, I mean, to?
Eight, eight passenger?
Passenger.
I think it's an eight passenger. And even they'll, they'll put some car seats in it too, if they need to do a couple of little pre-K runs. You need to work.
How many are in the postgraduate?
Six.
One one's graduating, but I think there might be others.
Yeah, for, for this year, for that, we're, we're budgeting for, I think there's six now.
Okay.
Not for who's aging out. I mean, we have one, at least one coming up.
Okay.
And that, that's another one that we have to keep that threshold there to make it worthwhile, like as opposed to doing the outplacements. We're, we're seeing in that transition program in the future, some ability to grow and bring in students from other towns. So we might, we might be seeing profit from that. We just, our current, um, teacher in that program, so I have some I think brilliant ideas for how we're going to grow that program in the future and start bringing in some tuition. Not, not for next year, but down the road, but hopefully.
Can you tell me what non-certified salaries are, example, and why that had a eight and a half percent increase?
So the non-certified salaries are, um, our paraprofessionals, our administrative assistants, their, the van drivers. So you had to add three van drivers into there. Um, all the increases, um, it's, it's some non sort of, um, uh, non-union Board of Ed members in central office, so Jen and Tricia. The, the security guard, the custodians are in there, but that jump is because of the three van drivers that we had to add. And, oh. The paraprofessionals. So every year we budget for, say, fifty-five paraprofessionals, but then they have to go to the board because students come in that need one-to-one para. So we, throughout the year, we have to add them in and then at the end of the year ends, we try to roll it in into the next year. So right now we have sixty-one paras. So that budget, and we cut four. So I believe our budget last year only had fifty-five paras. So it's the additional paras that were needed minus the four that we left. So it's the additional paras, the van drivers, and then just all the contractual increases, really.
So that's everyone that's not a teacher, pretty much.
Basically, or an administrator.
Are they mostly full-time employees?
Like, are we paying them benefits?
Um, the van drivers are per diem.
Um, there's a couple of secretary, one of the secretaries is part-time, but most.
Mostly full-time. They come under insurance and all the benefits.
Uh, well, let's say the, the, yes. The bargaining unit employees do and, and the prospects do. I don't think the van drivers. Full-time. Okay.
It's basically what, thirty hours, right?
Thirty hours.
Any more questions?
Just one, and it, it just jumped at me. I was looking at the non-certified lines. Line item one, two, zero, two, two, substitute salaries. I noticed that it's, it's lower than it was two years ago and last year we didn't have anything in there. Can you explain that?
Yeah, so this is the, the substitute teacher in charge. That's the, the sixteen hundred dollars. We're seeing a small amount of that. These are our substitute teachers, but what we started doing last year is, well, yes, last year. Um, when our principals are, we, we haven't, there aren't substitutes for principals. Um when our principals are out, we we haven't, there aren't substitutes for principals. So what what's happened in the past is when a principal is absent, often I will cover the building. Um Sarah will cover the building or Eric Martin, formerly would cover the building. Because we're not comfortable without an administrator present to help manage any potential emergencies or that type of things. We did have some situations where we needed multiple coverage just because principals were at conferences or other things. So we came up with a um, I thought it was a pretty creative idea that some of our teachers who want to become administrators and have their administrative certification, we're able to compensate them if they cover the building in those situations where we need to. Because either I, Sarah, or um in this case, Eric.
So this is like a stipend.
It's a small amount per diem that they would be paid if they if they helped us manage the building for the day in the absence of a.
But it will be if they do it, and that's why I went lower this, because I'll even see the actual, there was no budget in twenty-three, twenty-four, because it just started last year.
Right.
I looked at the history from this year, it hasn't been used as much. There there's some principals that have now left who, a lot of the ones are out. Um so I kind of cut it in half. And that's that's just me kind of putting it out there. And, you know, I I like to cover everything that we spend money on. Um so.
Thank you for that, because I I I didn't even know how that we did that. That that makes perfect sense.
Yeah, and for the most part, you know, I actually enjoy it. I'm mostly able to cover the buildings or Sarah, and I won't pick anymore. I'll just do it because I enjoy it and I wanna see the kids and actually miss being principal after days. But there are times when I can't and and we still need someone to be responsible if fire happens or anything like that. Otherwise, having this regular students.
Workbooks. What it seems like that's gone up successively the last three years quite a bit.
It's the new, the new program. So we got a grant to cover a good portion of it. Uh but we have to fulfill the rest of the purchases, and that's why the workbooks. So it's for Tracy and Ryan.
Into reading. So we had to shift um for another state law from um an old reading program that was based in what's called Teachers College to a new reading program. Um that new reading program is called Intereading, and actually this is the second, we piloted it last year. This is the first year out of. The state gave all of the districts a um partial grant to help fund the transition uh which we used as part of a pilot. And and now we need to, you know, fund the workbooks that the kids use um as part of their literacy program.
And is that, these workbooks, are they for the elementary kids or?
K- they're educated, but when they're consumed, okay, their workbooks, kids write in and.
Oh, okay. So, yeah, it's one and done, right?
So this will be going forward now every year.
Okay. And while I have the floor, um this tuition private sources. Five-six-oh-three.
That's the twenty-two.
That's the the student, the outplacement.
That's twenty-two kids that are.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we budget in that of excess costs. So, you know, that's that's taking out what we're anticipating, hopefully.
That could.
Getting, and you know, so that.
Go up or down.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, this year was, we were, we were stressed about a month ago. When we got the excess cost, we budgeted seventy and came in at sixty-two. Um I think that Hartford heard a lot of us very clearly say we were disappointed with that because we were promised another tier of the seventy. But uh last week, the legislature passed the supplemental, which gets us back to what we budgeted, which is why we're in a much better mood now than we were a few weeks ago. And the same thing happened to us last year. So that's a number we watch very closely. Um and, you know, for us, it's about predictability. We've we've said to our legislators, you know, we would like you to fully fund it, but more importantly, what you promised us and that we put in our budget, it doesn't help if in the middle of January you change that. Um so we just need, we need predictability out of that. And I I think I included, I'm not sure if you saw, a letter that the Board of Ed signed and sent to um Representative Carpinho and Senator Needleman asking for that level of stability and full funding with that excess cost grant. Because again, that's that's one of those headwinds or tailwinds, depending on how many they receive in that reimbursement and how many students exceed the threshold, some which is definitely.
Okay, thank you. Um question on on special ed uh budget and and handling, but I know over the years, uh since my time on Board of Ed, maybe thirteen, fourteen years ago, uh we saw a need to do more in-house programs. And that's developed wonderfully over the last ten years or so. Uh and I know it saved the uh the town a lot of money. Um would the next step logically be if we can maybe bring some of those services in-house over the next three to five years? And then maybe make it a nexus of services provided, not only for our students, but maybe students in this area. Is that something or discussion that you've had? And would that be something um that would have a a an impact on the budget um in a positive way? What's your thoughts on that?
Yeah, it's a really, really good question. Um all of our schools have specialized programs now. We have the ABA lab at Valley View, Lys program at Gildersley, um Bridge program at Brownstone, um Harbor program, high school, middle school, as well as our life skills programs. That's something that Sarah is always watching very carefully. It's harder for us because we're so small, right? In in some cases, it gets to a point where, depending on the need of the student, if you have one or two students with that particular need that would require specialized programming, it might make sense to outplace them. But as soon as you get to three students with that, then it might make sense to hire the teacher and clinician and bring it in-house. So um you know, and of course, every year that changes based on the age of the students and who, whether people are moving in and out of school. So the answer is yes, when it makes sense. But sometimes it does make sense to outplace. Because you, if you bring the program in-house, you have to hire the faculty staff in-house. Otherwise, if you send them out, you don't need to hire that faculty staff. But both Dawn and Sarah were brilliant at that, watching that that, those numbers closely. Um and when it makes sense to build the programs in-house, we do, because that's a potential savings from outplacement. But it doesn't always work out. And of course, once you build that, the program in-house, then certainly you could potentially tuition students in. But that's also something that, you know, takes a lot of work and coordination with other towns. We are moving towards that with our transition program, but not at this point with any of our our other specialized.
Thank you. All right, some great questions to them. Any others? Is Mike Fernandez online? Any questions? I might take it, yeah.
Yeah, I'm online. Uh no, no questions at this time.
Oh, no questions. Okay, good, good. All right, uh for the questions, uh thank you very much.
I appreciate both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, our fearless director of finance, Tom Robinson. Welcome, Tom.
We're gonna start on page nineteen. That is Department One, the Board of Selectmen. This uh budget is made up of the Board of Selectmen's budget. We increased the program services um as the cost of running the meetings um continues to rise. Page twenty-one, for selectmen, for selectmen budget is made up of two full-time employees. Other than that, there were no changes.
Can you repeat that, Tom?
The first selectmen budget.
Yeah.
Has two full-time employees. There was no other changes.
Okay, showing that, okay.
Page twenty-three, FX Commission. Increased it by about twenty-five dollars, did an increases in the uh peel box cost. Page twenty-four-five, probate. There was a decrease this year in probate. Last year, the probate allotment had a fire-resistant cabinet purchase that they did. And they didn't even make that as a one-time purchase, therefore it dropped. Slight decrease here in elections. We continue to work through the early voting. You know, decisions within the state. Uh so you'll see some additional monies there for the part-time uh employees, uh which are really the registrars. And that's their time. We also have election worker stipends for the election workers that that also have to participate and the deputies. Um and then we also are getting some new machines at some point. So we expect an increase in the maintenance cost there uh as well. And uh seems like election supplies continue to rise. So but the global four-point-six-one percent decrease, it's not a presidential year.
Mike is, can I ask you a question? I'm just curious, Tom, um line fourteen double oh seven, that the uh lecture worker stipends actually decreased from last year. My my gut tells me that with early voting now, that maybe you don't need as many folks at the polls on Election Day. Can you explain why that drop of about eight grand for the stipends?
Because it's not a presidential election.
Right, so that would be the difference.
Tom, you know roughly how close we were to that thirty-nine thousand last year?
I don't have that information with me too, but I'll try to get that for the uh deliberations.
Do we, Tom? Is it early voting, like for these municipal elections coming up, we have to have early voting?
Yes, it appears a fourteen days of early voting.
So people can hear.
Yeah, the other thing too is we had, we had, you know, um primary uh US Senator last year. So with a municipal year, you know, we wouldn't have, likely not gonna have a primary, not gonna have early voting for a primary. Uh but the fourteen days of early voting is for any general election at this point. There's um, there's talk up in the state of adjusting that for municipal year, but nothing's been set.
Thanks for the reduction. I just wanted to ask a question.
Thanks, Michael.
And again, and as we work through this, I mean, these are, you know, more or less estimated guesses on these numbers on that line. So we just saw due to not being a presidential, it would drop somewhere.
Thanks, Tom.
Uh Finance Department has the uh for uh full-time employees and a part-time benefits coordinator. Um the, one of the line items that we have seen an increase here is the rental use of building. So um when the schools are utilized, um the people, you know, the uh people get billed out and that revenue comes into lease or rental revenue. Um so the custodians that work those um jobs that are not related to park and rec, then they get charged to me, my budget here. So there's a revenue line item in that. There's an expense line, there's been more use of the schools. And uh obviously contractual costs, we haven't raised that uh line too much, but uh uh we are definitely seeing a struggle in this fiscal year. And then, you know, we're hedging about there, the educated guess at the number. Um service contracts are made up of, you know, price, ADP, devalue, and um any other contracts that will arise during the year and that. Um data processing, uh going up five hundred, that's uh the ECA reporting continues to rise each year. Uh that we have to do that, the contracted service for that uh goes up to. So that's the finance budget. Collector of Revenue, Collector of Revenue is made up of, full-time collector. Uh the water and sewer clerk is split between water and sewer, but also helps in this, but they don't get charged to this budget. Um the the this budget is made up of the the collector and then the service contracts that uh more or less run the tax uh system. Um and then there's conference meetings to do for the education for both uh parties. I believe the uh deputy is, or the uh, is uh trying to pursue getting a uh getting the certification, the tax collector status. Um so she's working through that process. That would be a charge to this budget. Uh page thirty-three is the assessor. The assessor has two uh full-time uh positions, a full-time assessor and a full-time assessor administrative assistant. They also have service contracts that run multiple uh different softwares within the department and also pay for various in theory books, but software systems that uh, you know, we allow to help uh pricing guides and and things of that that he needs to to do his work. Uh then the uh conference meetings and dues is related to conference meeting dues for the assessor as well as the um if the uh Board of Assessment Appeals goes any training. Or if Assessment Appeals is up this year, is it is a reevaluation here? Uh Town Council, uh Town Council is up slightly throughout here. Uh on the labor pension, almost all of the contracts are up for negotiation um in fiscal twenty-six. Um we're gonna try to do it within that number. Also, uh pension matters are are in that number as well. They're not allowed. The ones that are not allowed to get charged to the actual DB plans. But the other increase is in general counsel, just a slight increase of five hundred. And then planning and development matters. We've seen in the past uh few years, this year, twenty-four and and twenty-five continued increases in planning and all matters. We're seeing positives on the revenues, but we're also seeing some of these uh cases that require uh expenditures there. So that's why you're seeing the increase in that line. Thirty-nine. Tax matters, tax matters are, you know, somewhat few and far between. Um it would be like if we had to do a foreclosure. If there was a year where we do a foreclosure, what we what we do in an alternative is we do tax sales generally. Um but um the, you know, there can be some type of bankruptcy matters that will go into there. So any times, anytime there's bankruptcy matter, we have to speak to the attorney about that. But um that's the, you know, it's uh, i- if you, if if a, if a matter arises, it would require that. That's why the funds are there. Is you have to have the, if there, if there, if the matter does arise, it generally is uh urgent and or can be costly quickly. Because there's, there's special um uh attorneys that we would use for some of those tax matters.
Why didn't we have any expenses in tax matter than previous years?
We had expenditures in previous years, but in the past two, we've had, we haven't had any because we ran a tax sale. So the tax sale would be run, the expenditures would go to the people that need to pay the taxes. So we didn't run a foreclosure, we didn't run a strict foreclosure. If we run a strict foreclosure, we have to pay them.
The attorney fees.
Yeah, w- if we run a tax sale, the actual people that haven't paid their taxes to get their money and or the buyer of the property. I think we only had one property that sold, all the other ones, the people paid. They would be required to pay all of his fees as well as uh, you know, any any other associated fees with that uh tax sale. So that's, that's why there, um I guess thankfully, there hasn't been too many bankruptcy charges as well in the past two years.
Great.
The uh um town clerks, page thirty-nine, this is made up of two employees. Um you mean i- issue here in the increases, the index and recording, um the current software um is uh that they, they no longer gonna support that software. And they're gonna require us to change out of that. Um and the newer uh companies that are providing the service uh are just uh are more expensive with a quality um of software. So uh the town clerk is gonna uh, we're going out to bid on those services. And uh but the, there is an expectation of uh an increased cost with the change in contract.
How many full-timers in that office?
Central services apply as a department that we purchase things for other uh departments. Um so this is your postage and your advertising, I mean, things that are increased, their postage continues to rise. So we just increased it slightly. Um and then advertising, uh more or less you have to advertise within the current, sometimes middle town press on. uh, bigger items. Um, and those uh, publications continue to um, you know, be more expensive to advertise in. So we use those to meet our, our requirements. And then there's also printing costs of multiple printing, things that we would need either envelopes or, or documents, their, their forms. Slight increase in that. Page uh, forty-three, Technology Budget. Um, we are back to being uh, fully staffed in this uh, department, which is great. We have the director and the uh, the assistant uh, assistant director, um, as well as a part-timer. Um, so that's a, a good thing. I've been, there's some transition in the past couple of years with retirement. And a couple uh, you know, other employee departures. Uh, so that's good news. Um, the biggest items here are, uh, licensing software. Um, there was some ARP of funds that we utilize to install new, uh, or are installing new types of softwares, um, many of them in the land use sector, uh, and they're required a software service contracts. Um, are, are in this budget. It's seventy-six hundred for laser fee yearly, eighteen thousand for the permitting licensing software. Thirty-five hundred for the ti- time bond uh, license for GIS. Uh, five thousand forty for Adobe licenses. And there's a few other licenses that, that are there. Many of the licenses are uh, becoming subscription-based. Um, so those are uh, the list of items that will uh, be in uh, that, that are required to uh, help run and operate the various software systems in the, in the town. So that's, that's your big jump hit in that. Some of these you might not see in the, when we look at the expense in twenty uh, five yet, uh, because there is still an implementation. Um, but we had budgeted, I think, nine thousand, assuming this will permitting. And uh, there's going to be, that was when the bids came in, it came out to an eighteen thousand dollar uh, annual fee there. Um, so just that, that's, that's one of the significant jumps in that, in that budget. Otherwise, the budget is uh, other than the salary, it's remaining pretty, pretty uh, consistent. The overtime uh, has dropped. There's been some change in personnel and, and different uh, you know, attempts in trying to limit overtime. Page forty-five is the Fire Department. Uh, the uh, one of the things is in this budget, we put back the Assistant Chief and the Captain Training. Uh, I think that might have been removed, whether um, maybe it should or should not have been in twenty-five. So we, have that back in there in twenty-six. Uh, uh, budgeted positions. So if they are needed to be filled, the Fire uh, Department can fund, you know, fill those and have funding. There is uh, in three thousand uh, thirty thousand of training, there's a two thousand dollar increase. I've been told by the uh, chief that there's additional training for his uh, for, for the team. Um, the new, new requirements, the training is, is also relatively uh, costly. Uh, we did increase the service contracts. Service contracts are throughout all the firehouses as well as some of the communication contracts. You got HVAC and they also communications and various other, uh, we did jump it a thousand. Hopefully it will hold there. Um, that's a, or be enough. Um, that's a, that's a tricky one to uh, hit. And uh, some of the state contracts have changed too. So, uh, it'll be interesting to see if um, uh, you know, that'll be enough or not when we get there, but we're going with that number now. Licensing software, there have been some adjustment in the software. So that should be the software costs of the, of the new, the newer software that's been in, installed or being installed uh, in this year. In the um, in the maintenance of that. And the, really is no major other adjustments in this, this country. This department. Uh, page uh, forty-seven is the Fire Marshals. The biggest adjustment here is a, um, they had put a, made a fire inspector, a volunteer position this year. Chief Shay had proved, uh, passed the uh, fire inspector uh, job there. And uh, now he is going to be added in as a fire inspector here in town. So that should help the burden on the Fire Marshal's Office to address uh, various matters of mandates and uh, projected uh, scheduled projects that are going to break ground in the near future. So that would be more or less was just the increase of about three percent of salary and then some time for that position, four hours per week, twenty-five thousand. Page forty-nine is the Emergency Dispatch. Um, they, the, the big jump here is the contract with uh, Dispatch. It's been hitting, you know, going up yearly since we signed that, um, this cycle. Uh, we have Valley Shores in this with the Dispatch, Johnson Security Controls for all, uh, monitoring of all buildings in the town, including schools. And uh, we always have monitored the uh, the Corey Ister, the uh, or I think it's one of the housing districts. Sorry, I don't remember the name off the top of my head. Um, and then we have the uh, Encore, um, is for the Public Works Highway Garage. And then the Associated uh, security is the Fire Company Two Monitoring. So that's uh, the monitoring cost for that and the increase in the middle town dispatch contract. That contract goes to twenty-seven. Page uh, fifty-one. So fifty-two fifty-one has a full, has all thirteen uh, officers uh, in positions in there. There is a pending thirteen officer, um, getting approved, uh, I think, or possibly starting in your future. Um, so that was uh, brought in at a higher level than initially budgeted, uh, is uh, so that uh, that uh, a part of play a little bit in the differential and the increase in the uh, salary line item. And um, so that'll be uh, fully uh, staffed at the thirteen officers. Um, the, the ser- the service contracts um, does include some of the uh, camera um, activity that needs to be in there for the uh, traffic cameras, but we needed additional funding for that. So that although the expenses may not look um, to be there, but there's, there's some monies in there for uh, the storage and, and the wireless connections that are required uh, for that licensing software, multiple different licenses that the Police Department uh, needs to uh, for their operations as well as their accreditation. There's a drop in the exam services because um, the, the uh, pretty people have been hired, the, the, but exam nation continues as there's um, different report uh, kit, reporting requirements for uh, like mental evaluations and things of that that continue, although um, exams are uh, uh, for the uh, academy, should be hopefully uh, hopefully I don't have to spend too, too much there. And that's uh, that's really the increase is that employee. Page fifty-three is Emergency Management. Um, really, it's the uh, EOC Coordinator. Um, it's really not much of a change here. Uh, Building Department has a full-time building official and a half-time clerk. It's a full-time clerk, but it's shared between them and the, the uh, Planning and Zoning Department. Um, we did not budget uh, any um, fill-in uh, position time. I know this year we have uh, a need for some fill-in uh, time as the director has been out um, a little bit. So, but we did not budget that. If that's something that you, you know, want to consider during deliberations to fund. Um, but we, we, we went with uh, the full-time position and the uh, and the salaries of, of those individuals. That's the only change in that budget. So now we've hit the public works. So we're going to skip forward to uh, seventy-three. This is the Planning Department. So this is the other uh, part of that other Administrative Assistant and then as well as the Town Planner. That is the increase in that budget was associated with the Town Planner. Age seventy-five. Uh, so the zoning enforcement, it's been uh, we, we did hire a zoning enforcement officer in August twenty-four, which is great. Um, person's been working well with the team. Um, reason for the increase in that line item was during the hiring process. Yeah, I think I'll increase the uh, board of, uh, the ra- the rate after the budget was passed. So now the, that rate that you guys all pass, it's, you know, into this budget.
Um, this zoning enforcement person. Is that a full-time or part-time?
Twenty hours.
Twenty.
Uh, Planning and Zoning, uh, forty-two. There, the, the change in this is uh, for the uh, L cog, the river, the uh, what's the name of that, Mike? Lower Connecticut River Council, I think it's called. Yeah, okay, go on. So uh, I guess uh, every five years, there's a natural hazard mitigation plan required. Um, the past, sometimes we got hit with it after the fact. This time they wanted to know that you had it budgeted. So in the past, sometimes we would use contingency. So in this year, that's what there's a five thousand, three hundred and eighty-dollar amount that needs to be paid that they've telling us it's going to be um, built out in July or August for this uh, five-year natural hazard mitigation plan. Page seventy-nine is the Zoning Board of Appeals. Uh, there's no change to this budget. Page eighty-one is Inland Wetland Coordinator. The increase in this is in enforcement. Uh, and, and this is just a, a bump in time as it seems like it continues to go over budget with the number of hours that are required for inland wetland commissions. It may or may not be uh, for the enforcement officer. It may not be enough, but I mean, it's uh, you know, we're trying to get that increased in just the number of uh, sheer hours that's doing. And that's not without with the change in the rate of the contractor. It's just hours that the contractor is um, putting in. Page eighty-three is a Conservation Commission. There's no change. Page eighty-five is the Economic Development Co- Commission. Um, slight change. They requested a five hundred dollar increase in their marketing budget. Uh, page eighty-seven, Capital Commission. There's no change. Uh, page fifty-one, the Health Department. Uh, it's a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. This is on eighty-nine, I said that wrong, eighty-nine, hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred. That increase is uh, it's a It's a per capita increase, uh, that Chatham Health District uh, laws provides to us. And then we donate them with their services. These ninety-one is more or less the phones. These ninety-three. Um, increases here related to the dial ride and the Rural Transit District. The budget letter uh, uh, comes in from the Estuary, Estuary Transit District. So we made um, more or less the uh, increases that they're telling us that we have to do to, you know, be part of that. And then um, on line eight, seven, zero, zero, six. Um, there, that's right. Eight, seven, zero, zero, six, uh, Connection Emergency Shelter. Um, they uh, more or less, they are the people that are connected with the Eddie Shelter that's in Middlesex. It's, I guess, it's the only homeless shelter that provides service in Middlesex County to single adults. And men and women, the twenty-four hours a day, three sixty-five. Um, so they asked for an additional uh, three hundred dollars. Page eighty-five, Senior Center Budget. Senior Center Budget has uh, two full-time employees, a full-time Director and the Administrative Assistant. Um, they also have a part-time clerk to help uh, cover, you know, cover the area. Um, and then uh, the um, they're requesting an increase in the instructor fees. They want to have more, some additional classes. Uh, hopefully they can uh, generate, generate additional revenues with that as well. We did increase the electricity. There seems to be uh, more electricity usage since the um, kitchen renovation project uh, took place. And there was also some additional like air filter uh, equipment put in. Um, so it seems like some of that commercial equipment is just you generating more uh, usage as well as the rates of electricity have gone up. That is the uh, increase in that budget. Uh, Municipal Agent of the Elderly, uh, they asked for a two thousand dollar in, or uh, the, the selectmen, uh, first selectman put a two thousand dollar increase. I believe there was a higher ask. But we uh, put a two thousand dollar increase. This is for German driver stipends. Uh, Portland Library. The directors here, did you want to uh, go ahead?
Let's have a little break. Great.
I'm happy to give Tom a break to catch his breath. This is a marathon. Um, so for us, the, the biggest, so in addition to like the increase uh, for electricity, I think we're all kind of seeing that increase personally, as well as the city, the town buildings. Um, what I am requesting is a part-time, an additional part-time staff person for the library.
So you currently have for full and part-time.
Great question. I have seven full-time staff and I have four part-time staff. And so I was trying to, since I'm so new to you all, um, I was looking at, in two thousand sixteen, there were six full-time staff and seven part-time staff. And in two thousand five, there were six full-time staff and nine part-time staff. So between two thousand five and now, I'm not missing, but there's, there's a reduction of staff hours of forty-eight point five staff hours that I no longer, that the library has been off, operating without. So.
Per week or per month?
A week.
Per week.
Um, and I know that there was a reduction in maybe open hours after that, between, between, at some point between two thousand five and two thousand sixteen, there was a reduction in hours. And we're kind of not, I, I would, I'm really hoping that we're not on the cusp of needing something like that again, because we're all working. Um, the, the biggest impact I'd say is uh, evening and weekend coverage for us. Our uh, union, the, the Library Staff's Union Contract has done, does three things that I'm gonna kind of identify in there. Um, they have bargained to work one in three weekends. Like, that's the maximum rotation that they would be expected to work for, you know, balance of quality of life and trading off on that. Um, but as soon as you have a staff absence or a program, they're, they're able to volunteer to work more. And they do. Um, but we're, we're reaching a point where if we have, um, there's, there's just no, there's no give on any, on any piece of that, which is my concern. Um, and if the, the char- one of the charges that I've received is to apply for grants for, to support programming. But if I, if I'm your only exempt person, I can't be in two places at once. So if I, if I had had to meet, miss the Voices of Portland event, they would have carried on, but I feel like it would have definitely, like we, when we agreed to help the, the Historical Society apply for that as a partner, part of what we put up for in-kind services was part of like a, a little tiny slice of my salary, which they have really, they've really gotten their money's worth out of me on that one. But um, but if part of that is being present for that event, they needed me on hand to be there that day. And if we had had, if we had had a, if we had had somebody come down with COVID or the or the flu or an emergency, like there's no, there's no cushion. Um, and I would have been not able to fulfill my requirements that I agreed to for this grant. So I, I'm, that makes me very nervous when I'm looking at applying for other grants. So, cause I'm happy to do it. Um, happy is a strong word. I'm very, it's a reasonable expectation for me to do it. Um, but if, if what you're putting up is the staff hours, we need to have those staff hours to put up for it. Um, I'd say that, and the other thing, I know it's a big scary percentage for mine, but also last year there was a, um, a point six five percent decrease because I'm slightly less expensive. Um, you have, you have a younger, newer staff. You've had some staff retirements. And so you're have, you have people coming in at the bottom or closer to the bottom of the pay scale. So it's kind of resettling from that. Um, as well as in fiscal year twenty-two, there was only a point nine four percent increase. So I feel like we're some, like some of that big number is just kind of balancing itself out. But it is, it is also a genuine request as a fifteen-hour librarian level staff person. I think I have. Okay. Any, any questions about that piece of it? Yeah.
I do. So. The part-timer. The additional part-timer is the reason for the jump from one oh seven, five hundred to one thirty-seven, five hundred?
Yeah, uh, that and contractual increases. They, there's, um, you have newer staff members, so they're getting their step increases as well as their COLA increases. So like there, it's a, it's a little bit of both. Um, and Tom, double check, check my numbers on that.
And the part-timers, how many hours?
Right now I have four part-timers working eighty-two point five hours a week.
Okay. And the, the new one you want for how many hours?
Fifteen hours per, I mean, as many as you're willing to give me, but fifteen hours is what we figured was a, a reasonable ask. We also want to get somebody who, like, we, we want someone, fifteen hours seemed like it was a reasonable, like it's a master's level degree position. And, um, it seemed like I looked at the, the Connecticut Library Consortium, uh, that, and the, the, like the statewide job posting board for librarians. And so I, I paid attention to what we were offering salary. We, we would potentially offer salary-wise versus how many hours. And I did some, that seemed like it was a sweet spot where we'd get a lot of qualified candidates. And I'd love to be choosy if I can be choosy.
So while I have you, then on the regular payroll.
Yes.
It's up, uh, eighteen and.
Twenty-seven.
And like, yeah.
That's again, that's again, because of step, those step increases and, um, and the, the kind, like the contractual, contractual ones.
Okay, that's pretty big. Yeah, from, from previous years. Well, in twenty twenty-three, it was actually about the same point. That's that, that dip in that. Yeah, what happened there when it went down?
The.
Retiree.
Yeah, you, you're, you had a bunch of, you had a bunch of people, you had Jan retired and I stepped in and I'm, I'm a bargain.
So, so we're just getting back to where we were three years ago.
Right. Closer.
Yeah. All right.
Any, any questions? Any, yeah, please.
Question on the, you, you mentioned the contract change where workers now one every three weekends, but they could volunteer. Does that include a sweetener if they volunteer, like?
Like, so right now, they, it's right now, it's, they're just, the sweeteners, they're willing to do it because of the service part of it. The, the other piece of it is I think over, over December, when we really had, uh, we had like an abrupt, we had somebody out for medical leave and we really didn't want to close the library, especially when kids are out on break and parents are like, please, please have your doors be open. Um, so there, there was, but the staff came in and worked like a single overtime hour in rotation if we needed, if I wasn't available, essentially.
They went into overtime.
Yes, and they, and they were kind, that, that was kind of the, but it was, they were willing to do it for just a single hour, but they, but it's in the middle of their Saturdays. So that was kind of the, the balance, the balance that we struck when we made the request to, um, uh, at that point, select and curly, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, uh, any, any online questions, since you have me? Say it's a note. Cool. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So the, uh, next budget is the employee benefits budget. Um, is a, they, they talked about, uh, the medical, uh, change before, about a nine point nine percent increase on the, uh, medical, um, covers. We did have a change and we're having a change in carrier. So we're working, uh, toward that plus it's just a change within the, um, the population, we had some, um, you know, different, uh, different people take different, uh, coverage. Um, we are having, um, in the DB plan, the, uh, the town pension plan, uh, uh, the increase was an increase in the DB contribution. Uh, about twenty-six is, uh, change in personnel. Um, and the required, uh, contribution, uh, goes up. As, um, you know, the time goes on here, uh, as the, that one dwindles, the contribution will probably tend to rise for a period of time. The, um, on the, uh, police pension, um, the required contribution had increased to, uh, three hundred and forty-six, five sixty um, this year from, uh, the last year of two fifty-three, eight hundred, it's about ninety-two thousand increase. And that was, uh, partially based upon the, um, increase of retirees, uh, into pay status. So I think we had three people go into pay status. Um, the volunteer fire plan, uh, decreased. Some of that was due to good investment returns and some was due to change in membership. Um, the collective bargaining, uh, that one's, uh, we dropped that this year because it's a non-OPEB value year. So every two years, there's a OPEB valuation that's required. Uh, fiscal twenty-five was the valuation year. And twenty-six, uh, it is now, but there's still continued, um, OPEB disclosures that are required. Um, the one oh three, the, uh, every time I look at this one, it makes me nervous that it says zero, but I, uh, I checked it a few times, but, uh, we're going up in all the areas. It just was a, the cybersecurity number came in lower than we anticipated. So I think even with the increase, we're able to be able to make that up within the number that we have there. So that was a positive for that line. Page, uh, one oh five is the debt service. See a considerable drop here of the thirty-six percent. Uh, the main, uh, thing there was the two thousand two, uh, refunding of nine point five million for the high school, middle school complex dropped off. That was, uh, the final payment was four hundred fifty-six, seven fifty. Uh, additionally, um, the Chromebook lease, uh, dropped off for seventy-six thousand, uh, three ninety-seven. So that was kind of the plan is, uh, Dr. Britton had stated, we, uh, picked up a lease for them. Uh, you know, it went on for, I think it was a four-year term. And then in this year, that when it drops on our side, the board was supposed to pick up the, uh, payment into a purchase, uh, plan instead of a lease, a straight-up purchase, so hopefully eliminate some of that, um, interest costs that you, you find, um, with, uh, with a lease. So I think that'd be, uh, it'll work out well into the plan system that they were talking about. I think that will be a beneficial, uh, plan, uh, to start. So the money came down from our side, goes back into their side on that, on that front. And it's a pretty, uh, a nice transition as that was how the plan was designed. Um, so that was the, uh, decrease there.
Tom, I got a question. Um, with the current bond that we have for the, this is the two thousand eighteen general town, when is that paid off? When's the last payment?
The exact date on that, I don't know if I have that on top of my head, but it was, it was a twenty-year bond from eighteen to.
Long time.
That'll be like thirty, yeah, thirty maybe.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's, I, I looked at it today, but it's, I was looking at an amortization schedule. It's like, here's a page, turn the page. Keep going. So, yeah, I was like, I was like, I don't think I really need to know this because this keeps going for quite a while.
Okay. I was just wondering, because the one below it says, you know, five oh seventh annual payment.
Yeah, I mean, usually on the bonds, they don't, in the, in the budget, we don't necessarily put it, it's in the, it's definitely disclosed in the financial statements.
Yeah.
So when we go over that, he'll definitely have all that, that detail there for you. This one here is usually it's a term that's shorter.
Yeah.
You want to know it so that, you know, in theory, the, the theory is that you plan one of these two years, you do another lease.
Yeah.
Because this one's starting to creep down, so you want to get one and.
So that one is so far away, we don't want to know.
Yeah, this one, yeah, this one, this one's quite a ways. The only thing that's kind of good was that the rate seems it dropped off the coupon for a little bit.
Yep.
Those, it's a floating, it's a different rate, so on and so forth. But that's why you see the interest drop from the prior year's interest on that one. But if you were looking at the prior year, but you'd see it drop a little bit.
Okay.
It's because of the interest, the principal's going down as well as the interest coupon decreased slightly. So that was good too. Um, now what we try to do is we're trying to move a lot of the debt. If you see the increase in capital, what we're trying to do is move the lower, the lowering of the debt over to capital. Because you don't want to, you want to either continue your debt to do bigger projects like we're doing, like school construction projects and adding debt back on. You want to keep that debt in your system, keep going flowing because you know that you need to have purchases of large values. You need, you know, you know, you need millions of dollars worth of improvements, either of new school or improvements to your schools. So you want those to go on and you want your debt to be in the system. And if you don't leave it in the system, then you move it over to capital to keep it in the budget. So you don't build operations off of debt restriction. So you, 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 if you, some years, you, some years you do do that, you know, because you, you have to, but when you, you don't, you, you, you try not to do that because if then, when you do need to purchase more into a bigger endeavor, then it's a pure like hit right to your, you know, that, when you do that debt, it's a, it's a bigger number and it's not continual. So, um, when you see the increase in the capital, that was the thought process was if you're gonna drop around five hundred, you want to try to move as much of that over to capital to keep that as a constant until the next debt comes on, otherwise that you will, um, you're, you're building operations off of your debt.
You kind of cannibalize this.
Yeah.
That, that was kind of gets to my question. Uh, will we be able to see a clear picture for where that, in this case about, uh, five hundred and sixteen, one thousand, I know some of it went into the HVAC for the high school, I believe.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it will be a hundred percent clear, but if you go to the next page.
As clear as it could be, you don't.
If you look, oh, if you look on page nine oh, uh, twelve and nine oh three on the next page. Uh, you wrote, we wrote, so five sixteen. We had for the town monies and we increased it to eight thirteen. You on page one oh seven?
I am, right. What are we looking at?
It's under nine zero zero one two is under the, okay? So it'll be transfer out to capital non-recurring. So when we go to this capital non-recurring.
There's three hundred thousand more there.
Three hundred thousand more there. And then the next line down is capital non-recurring for the board of ed. There was zero there and there was a hundred and fifty-seven.
Four hundred and fifty-seven more or less.
Yeah. So is that the whole amount?
And does the rest of that go in to cover the budget to keep the percentage down?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. So that's, uh, so many of these will, you know, will be in the next cycle because it's the, these are most of part, uh, public works. But I'll go to animal control and youth in a minute, but I'll go hit the other ones that aren't.
Hey, Tom, before we leave this.
Leave where?
This pay down of this bond.
Yeah.
So was it, was it a specific project or school or something or?
The one that I said it was the refunding of the high school, middle school complex?
Yeah, that's what I missed.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, the two thousand, it was a two thousand and twelve refunding of the nine point five million dollar high school, middle school complex.
Okay.
So there was debt, then we refunded it in twelve.
Yeah.
To save.
The finance.
Quite a bit of money.
Yeah.
We saved a lot of money then. We refinanced it and it paid off, uh, there. And, uh, this was the final payment of that debt.
Okay.
Yeah. And then, uh, and then in this lease, in the two thousand twenty-two lease, there were two pieces of it. One piece was the Chromebook lease.
Yeah.
And the other piece was the town stuff for the five to seven years. Since we don't usually do that, but the need of the Chromebooks were so dire, we did that. So that, that was the plan of that. And that's why there's a, but it was blended together. So that's why I kind of just, you know, made note of it. So you knew that's what it dropped in. It was, you know, uh, it wasn't a separate, we didn't show it as a separate lease in the schedule. We just said it was blended together.
Good. Okay, thank you.
All right. So, uh, the, uh, nine oh oh six is a transfer out. This is the only place where you'll see that a hundred and ten thousand. There's fifty thousand that goes to the airline trail. There is, um, fifty-eight thousand, seven fifty that goes for the water department for fire hydrant upkeep, um, that we've, uh, done. And then I believe there was two thousand dollars for the solidarity committee. And then there's a fifty thousand dollars for the open space. And that's all for that now. And the next page is one oh nine, which is contingency. So page one nineteen, uh, it's animal control. Still, uh, continue to struggle with trying to get a replacement for Middletown. Um, would like to be able to generate more rental, uh, revenue there. I know the first selectman's office and the animal control officer continue to work through that and try to find. Uh, but it's, it is a challenge. Um, so we, uh, that'll be, we have the sale of the dog licenses, uh, the dog surcharges. And then we have the transfer in of, uh, to cover the rest of that budget. Uh, we have one animal control officer. Um, there are some part-time people that work on the weekends when dogs are there, their animal, you know, and if there's an animal that needs, you know, to be covered, that we do that, try to do that in lieu of overtime so that uh, it's a better endeavor if we're able to utilize the part-time people for the town. And that's, uh, more or less the benefits for that one person. And then, um, it's just the remainder of the budget is the operations of, I don't think there was very much change, um, from that cycle. On page one twenty-four is the youth service department. Courtney Fitz is the director of that. Uh, but, uh, we have, uh, we get grants from DCF, um, roughly around twenty-nine thousand dollars worth. Uh, DC, DSS, we get some payments from, um, uh, Chris Napala, Tano is one of our, uh, our, uh, he's like our counselor that we have. And, uh, for some of his services that we pay out of the, uh, CRC, ECC, um, there are some payments that get reimbursed, uh, through the, it was the Husky program or Medicaid program, one of the two. And the money comes in on that. Uh, we also see sometimes in the rees, uh, the resource center fees. Those again would be fees that would come in from, uh, private pay, people that pay for, um, Mr. Matal, Matal, Napalitano services. It could also be if we run a program and charge fees. Um, haven't been doing that where they're charging fees lately, have been just running the programs for the grants. Um, and then there's also some contribution revenues that are possible. Uh, the employee, uh, the, um, there's a change in, um, family, I guess, of the employees. So that's, uh, you see the increase in the one line item. Um, so really the remainder of the, uh, the remainder of the, Steve's more or less consistent throughout the budget there. It's, well, it's just a change in medical from to a family plan. And those are, all the other departments are associated with public works or park and rec, which are next cycle.
Well, so, any questions? Any, any questions for Tom? Cause he hasn't talked enough.
So, no, I just have one question.
Sure. Page eighty-five for the grants consulting contract. Under EDC.
Yeah.
Um, are they the ones writing the grants for like the state grants and stuff like that? What is that for?
That is, uh, they do economic development consulting for the town. They do help in some of the grant writing.
Hmm.
Yeah, um, they help the selectmen in some of it. They, I think they're working through the bar grants, uh, process with them. But it's like, they're like our consultant for, um, economic development, all type of economic development that matters. And it's all, and it's always been called a grant consultant, but it's economic development.
Alright. Um, on ninety-seven for the agent for the elderly. Are we max, I mean, I don't know if we would know it or you'd have to ask Sarah, but are we maxed out on the rides we can give? Because I know we're over the number that we budget every year.
Yeah, I mean, it's a challenging one there. This is a, you know,
Is that something we should go higher on? Because we're still below the twenty-two and twenty-three budget of what we actually spend.
Yeah, I mean, so we do get grant, uh, money for this.
Hmm.
And every year that there is a requirement to, um, not supplant. Um, so that would mean that we would, uh, you know, if they're going to give us money, we have to spend our money. And, uh, you know, keep spending the money that they give us to not lower our money.
Okay.
So we continually generally increase this, you know, at a reasonable level, but, you know, a one to two thousand dollar a year, uh, factor.
Hmm.
Um, we, uh, I mean, we're necessarily know, we're necessarily want to be in the business of being a transportation company. So we're trying to do our best to help as many people as we can, but not also be in the business of being a transportation company for all. Could you increase this? Sure. I mean, there would probably be, there could be as much, um, demand probably as you would like. The harder problem probably trying to find drivers to do the demand if you were to fund it under, you know, funded as much as you could possibly fund it.
Okay.
So that's, uh, you know, could it go up? You probably could go up, but.
But you're comfortable with it.
Yeah, I mean, it's like, I think that, I think that, you know, we continue to get the funding, which is good. Um, we continue to help many people, which is good. Um, and then generally if there are determined overages, we usually can manage it within the global budget.
Okay.
But it generally does require, you know, I think you, you generally you see this probably as a fourth quarter to enter in yearly, obviously you're, you're seeing that by the expenses, but and I'm sure that this year will be over the number of the squad did as well.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions?
You know, I'm good right now. I'm, I'm good for now.
Thank you all.
I'm good for now.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Tom.
I, I got to thank Tom again. Um, I had no idea how many hours he puts in and how much he cares about the town. Um, and, and the work that he does, he sweats every number and, and takes it personal, uh, when they go up. So, uh, thank you very much for all you do.
Yeah, I think all the department heads do to get all the stuff in here to me and, and the first selectmen to, we can't do without them to provide us the information and, and, uh, you know, answer our questions and help us throughout the process. And so, you know, it's a team effort and we all try to participate. So, but thank you for those kind of words.
Absolutely. Very good. Thank you, Tom. Um, I see Captain Cunningham is in the back. Uh, do you have a couple of minutes? Just, uh, just to give a quick rundown, uh, on the department and perhaps, uh, I, I knew I have a new officer coming as well, so this might be an opportunity to talk about that.
Evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Um, so as you know, uh, we have been short officers for a little while. But we are quickly, uh, filling all these voids. It's very nice. Our, our person that we hired who was an entry level, he's due to graduate this month, April, or I'm sorry, March twenty-sixth. Um, at that point, he'll have about four months worth of field training that he, he needs to go through before he's going to be on his own on the road. So it's a long process when they're an entry level, when you're talking ten months before you really start to get anything out of that position. And then on, I believe, March twenty-eighth, we have a new officer coming in, a retiree from East Hampton, twenty-year veteran, he's a local resident. And, uh, he's going to step right in. He'll have about six weeks of training and then he'll be on the road by himself as well. But so at that point, we'll be fully staffed. Um, we're already starting to see great increases in, um, excuse me, and what, and what the guys can do, their availability, they get out there, do some speed enforcement, things like that. Stuff that we haven't been able to do for about a year or so. So it's been, it's been positive in our department. It's a nice turnaround and we're very happy.
I know it's been, uh, it's been a challenge getting all the shifts filled, uh, having two people on at one time was a goal for most, not all the shifts, so.
Yeah, we, I mean, it's, it's unfortunate. It's still, we're not quite there. Um, our, our guys, they, they pull their weight, they do what they can. And our town is always safe. You never have to be concerned about that. But we still rely on Middletown on occasion to help us out. And they're, they're more than happy to. They have, you know, they have a lot of guys with some very good knowledge over there and, uh, we bounce a lot of things off the one we need to.
I spoke to their chief today. You guys have a great relationship.
Yeah, Eric's an excellent.
Um, we're on page fifty-one, gentlemen.
Um, thank you.
On, on some of the items that have been requested, uh, for next year, the traffic cams and others, which you might explain.
Well, they'll, they'll be this year.
Right.
The traffic cams. So what we have, um, will be, will be installed soon, uh, within, within the next couple of months are some traffic cameras. Um, they're going, they're going to be at various locations, mostly intersections within our town. Uh, there are three recourse systems, which are plate readers. And those plate reader cameras, they will give a ding or a hit to our officers who are working or who aren't working. Um, whether a car that is stolen or a plate that is stolen or a car that is of interest to another city or town, as soon as it enters or leaves our town, if it goes through this camera system and it reads the plate, it'll notify our officers. In the past, a lot of our bigger crimes, our high-profile type crimes have all been done by, uh, people using stolen cars. So we are, we're going to consider this a great asset for our department. It's going to be something that I think we can really work, work with and, uh, help us deter some of these bigger, bigger crimes. On the other cameras, one of them is going to be in front of the police department. We don't have any coverage on the road right now. That's an accreditation issue. And then some of the other ones are at intersections where we have a lot of movement and a lot of incidences like sixty-six, seventeen, um, Grove Street and sixty-six, because we're trying to cover the boatyard down there. And I believe, uh, High and sixty-six. High and sixty-six, we rely a lot on Cumberland Farms because they have a system, but it doesn't cover Airline Avenue, doesn't give us great coverage in that area. But the, the system, uh, Sergeant Knapp did a wonderful job working with utility communications and and formulating, uh, where they were all going to be laid out in, in our town. So really looking forward to having them implemented.
Okay, just one, one last thing, Selectman. Um, if you have any questions related to the budget specifically for him, uh, take a look right now. Otherwise we have to stay focused on that, but I, I was important to have you. Be interested in what you've done. Specific questions on budget.
For the new police cars for the capital budget.
Yep.
How many is that?
Two, two. That's two. It's, um, it was about twelve thousand, close to twelve thousand for the installation, removal of the old equipment and put it into new car. And now we have to have uh, special rifle mounts into the, the back of the cars.
Hmm.
And an upgrade of our computers. So I was talking to our tech guy. Some of our computers, our laptop computers that we use in the car, they cannot support Windows eleven. So we have to start phasing those things out.
Does the payroll number include the, the one new officer?
Yes.
Part-time?
Last year it was a half a position that we, that we bumped it up. Um, so next year it includes the full twelve-month position for that new thirteenth officer.
And what about the part-time retired person you've said?
Um, that's, uh, that was Captain Mulardo or Officer Mulardo as he's referred to now.
Oh.
So, yeah, he's still with us. Um, we keep that in there. Cause if there's training that he's required to do, we're obviously obligated to pay him while he's at that training. So he is certified. He helps us on the parades. Um, he helps us on some private duty jobs. He's there if we need him.
So he's the, the experienced part-time?
Yes, he is.
Okay.
Yeah. Nobody has reached, uh, that forty-year mark yet. He's got a lot of, a lot of knowledge.
Yeah. Do we have any of the other current retirees that are going to stay on for private duty work?
No, no, they were all offered that. They, uh, they all turned it down.
Smart guys.
Yeah. Well, I, I don't know. You can make some decent money and, you know, it, it makes the town some money too, if we can use those guys, but yeah, it's after you put twenty years in, you know, in the profession, sometimes you're just ready to turn the page and move on to something else.
Absolutely. You all good?
I'm good.
Captain Cunningham, thank you very much for all the work for the town. We appreciate it. We really do. Right. Um, that looks like we've covered everything we need to tonight. Everyone good with this? Well, we got a lot more budget talks to do in the future. Our next, our next one is coming up on Tuesday, March eighteenth next week at seven o'clock. We got to go through public works, grounds, maintenance, parks, rec and long-range capital. So, um, you guys focus on the numbers and, uh, get some rest.
And I'll be calling in on that.
Absolutely. We'll have a lot of work to do next week. All right, everyone. Thank you for either watching on Zoom. We're coming here tonight. We appreciate it. Again, Tom's help, Captain Cunningham and all those that contributed tonight. We appreciate it. Uh, we're doing that, we're doing the people's work to try to get the budget in line and ready for votes by the folks of Portland. So we'll keep on doing our job and everyone else keep watching and paying attention. We'll do this together. I thank you very much. Good night. And I need a motion to adjourn.
So we'll move.
One second.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Let's do it.